This conference will now be recorded.
Hi. Happy New Year. How are you doing?
Yes.
We're late.
Okay, if we can all have a seat, I'd like for us to get started. We have some special guests today, but before I introduce them, I would like to ask Vicky Griffiths to come up. She's our Chair for the Election Committee, and as you all know, elections are coming up.
Okay, to keep me on track, I typed up my notes, so bear with me, okay? Welcome, and I want to thank you for caring enough about your resort to show up, either in person or virtually. You are here because you want to support our community leaders as well as be in the know of what is happening. And I don't know, but that was a pretty nice table over there, and those people that are not here, they're missing out for sure. Each year at this time, we start to work on finding new board of directors for those who have served out their term. This year, we have two openings that will become available. The mission statement for the Election Committee is a standing organization of the Happy Trail Community Association. Working in the best interest of all homeowners and the association develops procedures for supervising and conducting the elections of the association. The purpose of our committee is to conduct an orderly, unbiased election representing the Happy Trails community as a whole. Deadline to submit a candidate application form is next Tuesday, January the 9th, at 3:30. So if you're still sitting on the line and thinking, hmm, can I do this or can I not, just contact us, we'll talk to you about it, okay? The next day, Wednesday, January the 10th, at 9:00 a.m., we vet the candidates to make sure they are who will represent our association, and Will McNamee will take the pictures. They are, at that time, able to start campaigning according to the campaign rules set forth by the state of Arizona. We will conduct a meet, the Candidates Forum, on January 25th at 1:00 p.m., and again on the 30th at 6:00 p.m. here in the PAC Center. Plan to attend announcement will go out in the e-mail e-blass. Because I don't expect you to remember those dates, right? We print, just to tell you what we do on our committee, we print the ballots, we fold, label, and seal 2001 envelopes for the election each year. It's quite a production, but we do enjoy it, and we have a lot of fun doing it at the time. The annual meeting announcement is enclosed as well. We do this to save you money, as we have found electronic voting is too expensive and confusing for most. I have inquired, over the last three years, with both Southern City Grand and Arizona Traditions regarding their percentage of voters with electronic voting, and found that it isn't always working or too confusing. So our system outweighs theirs, as ours is also ran with volunteers, and since we have a mail center where they do not, Lily graciously stuffs your envelopes in your mail slot on Friday, January the 19th. If you are here at the resort, otherwise, you will receive it through the mail. We can do this with a cost of approximately $1,100 each year. Now, it'll be a little bit more this year because of the fact that postage is going up. However, if you will help us and let us know that you really are here, fill out that blue form and make sure the office has your correct address. They're not Snoopy, they're doing it for a reason, to protect you as well. It is our responsibility, all of us, to do our homework. When we are voting, it is the only voice you can have, is by voting. Many countries, you're not free to do so, so let's vote responsibly and do your homework by attending the meet the Candidates Forums, or speak to them about any issues you would like to see implemented or changed. Don't voice them on Facebook, it does not do any good, trust me. Deadline to vote is Thursday, February the 15th at 3:30, so that's the day after Valentine's Day. So if you can kind of keep in mind, get your ballot in before Valentine's Day, that's kind of a key date to kind of remember. And we need, we need to make sure that we have at least 501 votes, which we always do, but a lot of the people, some of the people will not fill out their ballot correctly, and we have this every year, although every year, it seems like it's less and less that are confused, because we really work hard at trying to educate you on that. So please, make sure that you have only one vote per lot, so that if you are a husband and wife that lives there, and the wife wants to vote and you want to vote too, you need to make sure that there's only one vote coming in, because if we receive two on your lot, then it is invalid, so then it doesn't count at all. And don't vote for more than two people, because that's the only openings. The instructions are on, are inside, plus, we will be available to answer any questions as well if you get confused, so. And these rules are regulated by Arizona state law, so we have to conduct them properly. You're more than welcome to come and watch our validating, held on Thursday, February the 15th, and our counting system, which is held on Friday, the February 16th. However, you cannot talk. If you start talking, you're kicked out of the room, because we need to concentrate and make sure that it's done correctly. The ballot box will be in the library, as you enter into the library, it's right there, can't miss it, it's a big box, it's under lock, and off-hours, when the office is not open, it is always tucked away in an office behind, so it's really secure. I hope that I have answered any questions you might have. I can also talk after the meeting to anyone who has any. We will be introducing the candidates running at next board meeting, providing that Barbara says that's okay, which I'm sure it will. Okay, thank you so much again for coming and listening to me.
Thank you, Vicky. Okay, so for today's town hall meeting, we've invited some special guests, and I want to first, before I introduce them, thank them for taking the time out of their busy schedule to be here. We have council members Nick Haney and Ally Klein here, and they have a few presenters that they will introduce as we go along, but they're here to update us on things that are going around, that are happening in our community in Surprise. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the two of them, Ally and Nick.
Oh, he has one? Okay, good. All right, so, hi, everybody. Yes, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, anything else you celebrate, Mondays, Tuesdays, whatever you happen to celebrate. I'm Ally Klein, some of you know me, I've been to some of the meetings here in town before, but we wanted to have, Nick Haney is your council member, I'm just rented here outside.
Thanks for letting me be your guys' councilman, I'm looking forward to it, so it'll be, it'll be a good time, I think.
Yeah, and so we brought, so we're not completely boring, here's how the meeting's going to run. We have two guests from the city to talk about, a couple, one from the city, one from APS. So I'm going to introduce Jessica Perry from APS, who's here to talk to you a little bit about APS and their programs, anything that you might be able to be interested in, she can answer questions. And then Nick will introduce our folks from the city of Surprise in code enforcement that might answer some different kinds of questions that you have. And then when we're done with those guys, then we'll take questions from all of you on anything that you didn't think of up to this point, and we do have some information we can give you to get you started, so that's how it'll run, and then when you're done asking questions, then we'll leave. Does that sound okay?
At the end, we'll do a comedy routine that we've been practicing, just, so make sure you stay till the end, no leaving early.
That's right. All right, so Jessica Perry from APS is first.
Good morning, I'm Jessica Perry, I do local government affairs for APS, so I cover all of the West Valley on behalf of the company. I'm here to talk to you guys about programs and other information that you guys may be interested in, but first of all, I'll give you an overview of the company, and then I'll move through the programs, and then any questions, happy to answer, but be nice to me. So, next slide. Our service territory, we're the largest and longest-serving public utility in Arizona. We cover 11 of the 15 counties, we cross 34,000 miles of, square miles of territory, across the desert, into the mountains, so it's quite a unique territory compared to other utilities across the nation. We have about 1.3 million customers, and about 90% of those are residential. Next slide. As you may have heard, our company is very focused on our clean energy commitment, so by 2050, we hope to reach 100% clean, carbon-free energy for our customers. By 2030, we hope to reach 65% clean energy by using 40%, 45% renewables, and we've actually already hit that, we operate at 65% clean energy already. Thank you, yes. In 2031, we plan to retire all coal-fired generation, and that plays into our clean energy commitment, but I'll, as we go along, I'll talk about how we plan to continue to serve reliably using clean sources. Next slide. So, back one, please. Between now and 2030, which is honestly a blink of an eye away, we are installing a lot of renewable energy and coupling that with battery storage, though we have a lot of solar coming on in the next few years. We just filed our integrated rate, um, resource plan, I almost said renewable plan, but our integrated resource plan, and we have to file that every three years to the Arizona Corporation Commission, and that outlines how we plan to serve all of our customers in the growing years. And so installing solar, installing wind, expanding our natural gas, natural gas is key because it is clean and it serves as that bridge that is required during the hours that solar energy isn't as strong as some. Next slide. Our peak resource and demand, so in the past years, we continue to grow, in 2021, we had just over 75,000 megawatts being used across our service territory, and then this last year, we actually reached our peak demand, 81,000, just a little bit over, but just because of the hot summer, as we all know, it was a hot summer, and so we really watched how our customers were using their power, making sure that we weren't going to have any brownouts, keeping everybody across the company informed on the projections, and we were able to accomplish that, we were able to keep power on and keep a strong grid. Next slide. Our generation resources, in order to continue serving reliably to all of you and our extended customers, we have to have a diverse generation portfolio, and so keep making sure that we keep Palo Verde well-maintained and continue to get it licensed for future use, because that is a huge base load for our customers. I believe it serves over 70% of our clean energy, so that plays an integral part of our clean energy plan. Into, I know it's really small, but natural, you'll see in there, if you can, PPAs, you'll see in there, those are contracted, so there are developers that want to come out, build large-scale solar, and then sell their power to us. So we contribute, include that into our resource plans, there's two numbers there, one is our peak capacity and the nameplate capacity, the nameplate is what is planned on paper, and the peak capacity is actually what we see when it's at full capacity. So, solar and energy storage, as I mentioned, energy storage is a huge contributor to being able to serve all of you, making sure that we can collect all of that solar energy and then put it onto the system when we may, when we mostly need it, when solar isn't exactly strong. And then, the customer-based programs, that is where a lot of you come in, where we have programs where we can control a thermostat, and I'll go into this later, but, and you get a discount, you can override it, but that allows us to kind of decrease the use on the grid when we most need it. So during those 30 days straight of 110 degrees, when it was very close to reaching our capacity, you may not feel it, it may just get a little bit warmer, but that would really help us. And similar with large businesses, they have a similar program, they turn their load off or cycle their load every 20 minutes, so then it decreases the capacity on our grid. So now, we're looking at about 94,000 megawatts by 2027, I think we're about 11,000, over 11,000 megawatts, so we have a lot of growth ahead of us. Next slide. So as I mentioned, those, we call them demand-side management programs, those programs are where our customers can help us maintain reliability. So we have the Cool Rewards program, that program, you can get a smart thermostat, tie it into our system, we will only change the temperature of your house no more than 20 times, but you can override that. If you're hosting a party and you don't want us to turn up the thermostat a little bit, then you can override it and just turn it down, and you're still in the program. So you receive a discount on your bill, and then as, and that continues, the first year is the highest, and then on the next consecutive years are a little bit lower, but still a discount. We have the Energy Checkups, and one, the first one, we have one of our contractors come in and look at all of your usage, your, not utilities, but your washing machines, your refrigerator, just kind of see where you could maybe fix your high bill or your high usage, and so that costs a little bit of money, but then we have another option that's free, and you just call or log online to connect and just talk about kind of your lifestyle and how you use your energy, and then we can give you some tips. And then the third one, that's the Energy Analyzer, and that's pretty new to us. It's just a short survey that all customers can go online, fill out the survey, and then we'll produce your energy map, and then the customized tips and ways to save. Another program that's not up here that I failed to include, we have a solar communities program, and that program is for limited moderate-income customers, and anyone that's owning a single-family home or a multifamily development wants to install solar, or a school that serves limited moderate-income customers, they're, they can apply to potentially receive solar on their home, their building, or their school. So that's another one. Next slide. And all of this, I'm, please don't roll your eyes, but the, on our website, has a lot of information, and honestly, that's where I go to get a lot of our, all of the information that I talk about. So I pulled up kind of our residential area, and I highlighted the key areas, so under residential, you can see how you can save, that's where a lot of those programs that I already mentioned are found. If you're looking for the community solar program, that's going to be under solar, under sustainability. If you're interested in solar, and you don't know what you need to do or what, where to even start, go to Understand Solar, that has what you should be looking at, how, at your bill, what your house energy looks like, kind of put in different variables, and we'll produce some answers for you. And then, once you've done all the research with us helping you, there's also a site that, a link to another third party that goes into how to make a choice, how to determine who to use to install that solar. We know there's a lot of misinformation out there and some scamming going on, so we want to provide that information, and so I'm excited that we have this available on our website, it's pretty new to us. Next slide. Speaking of thermometers, you, we also have the APS Marketplace, and that's just a screenshot of the page, the website is marketplaceaps.com, but it can also be found on our website, but on that website, you can find all of the clean, the thermometers, you can see washing machines and dryers and EV chargers, and see the prices and reviews across the board, so it's a one-stop shop, and then you can kind of see, sign up for when the prices drop, so then maybe they're a little bit more affordable, or when you can get a rebate, and there is a little asterisk on some of those, and even if you've purchased them in the past, you could potentially get a rebate. Next slide. For our, there are rebates out there for our residential customers, also on our website, under residential, how I can save, so those are just a few of those options. I know we're always asked about rebates, and we do have them, they may not be too significant, but at least they can add to your pocketbook. Next slide. And then for those qualifying customers, we do have several assistance programs, we have the Energy Support Programs, Crisis Bill for those that are experiencing short-term crises, Account Plans, we always want you to contact us if you're experiencing any emergencies or are having trouble paying your bill, we want to work with you, we do not want to shut your power off, so we can see what programs we can offer. And then the Safety Net Program, that's fairly new also, you can designate somebody from your family or a friend, just to make sure that if you, I often forget to pay my bills because I'm busy, but, so if you're same as me, then somebody else will get notified, I know, I've added, I've added on to the auto pay. Yeah, yeah, it fits my lifestyle. So then, next slide. That is really, everything that I plan to talk about today, that is our customer care information. Up until COVID, we didn't have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week customer care line, and now we do, and so I encourage any question that you guys have, they will direct you, if you don't want to go online and look at the programs, call them, they're willing to help, we always have people on staff. So I just thank you guys for allowing me to come here and give you an update, I am available for any questions, I'll stick around also if you think of things as time goes on.
I do have a question. Hello? I do have a question. I know your, your talk is geared mostly toward residential, but does this Cool Rewards program and this Energy Checkup program work for businesses also?
I will have to check on the Cool Rewards, but I do know for the Energy Check, there is a business program.
Great, thank you.
I'll run some, I'll run some microphone around.
Okay.
Yes, indeed.
The question I have is the, I know you do a lot regarding residential solar, what sort of resources do you have available for us regarding commercial solar, such as our buildings?
Um, that's a good question. I was focusing on residential when I was doing my research, so I will have to get back to you on that, but I'm not sure if this qualifies as a nonprofit, but nonprofits do qualify for those programs, where we come in and install solar over parking lots.
I have another question on solar, I know the Salt River program, they have a sanctioned installer for solar energy projects, the APS folks do not, and there are a lot of solar installers out there that are less than upfront with people and lead people astray, so what is the probability of APS sanctioning or approving solar installers in the near future to help us from getting taken advantage of?
So, I know that that is a huge issue, so that is also why we added all of this information onto our website, so then people know where to find, who to install, how to determine that. Unlike SRP, we are regulated by the Arizona Corporation Commission, and so we would have to probably seek their approval before making those determinations, so we operate a little bit different, but I will take that back and ask.
Good morning, thanks for coming. My name's Bob Fall, I'm Lot 496. My question is more at the corporate level of saying, you were talking a lot about, about the energy-saving alternatives and the solar and so forth and wind, which is all great, but what is the corporate priorities? If you, and I assume they have them, but you would have some kind of corporate priority, like I would say, and this is without any electrical knowledge or company knowledge or anything, but, you know, that price, reliability, you know, long-term objectives like this, we were trying to put some long-term plans together also here at Happy Trails, but if you had to say, what was your number one, number two, and number three priorities, what would that be?
It would be affordability, safety, and reliability. We pride ourselves on reliability, compared to a lot of other utilities, mainly in California, we do have a very high rating for reliability, and we're proud of that, just because of the heat that our customers endure every summer, or in Flagstaff, the snowstorms that they see every winter, so that, those are our three priorities.
Super, I just, that was what I was running through on mine, is what you see out of California with the brownouts and with the whole thing, those whole things, so I think that's right, in my estimation, and I'm just one person, but that's right on track, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add on, I know we're talking a lot about renewables, but we are very careful on the amount of renewables we install at once, so then we can continue to provide reliable power, reliable power to our customers. So that's why we're looking to expand natural gas as a bridge, as I already mentioned, and then keeping Palo Verde online and hopefully extending its license for more years to come, and so I appreciate that question.
Hi, Jessica, I'm Sue Deal, I'm in Lot 1578 here. My husband is on oxygen at night, and I've been trying to get the program that suits us the best while taking into account that we cannot really lose power at night, and I, I had a hard time going through the website to figure out where that is addressed.
Okay, um, I, our customer care line, I would definitely call them, because you would definitely qualify for one of our medical customers, where we look, anytime we have an outage, we look at our customers that are out, and any medical customer is always called immediately, so, and I can come to you after this.
Hi, I'm Trudy Skelton, Lot 1413, I've just been wondering with the electric cars, is that putting a stress on our power grid?
So that is why we're going for a rate case, we have not increased our rates since 2020, and because of all the costs that are increasing and the large customers that are coming in that we're required to serve, and they contribute to a lot of the materials that are needed to serve them, but we're making sure that we can maintain a strong, reliable grid by making those upgrades, and some of those upgrades will include some new technology that we install on our lines, so that when we do have an outage, we can reroute that energy immediately, so then we can work on that area, but not have such a long outage. So those are just some examples.
Ken Leverton, 1548, about solar, I know you're, said you had plans for battery backups for your solar farms and stuff like that, is there any program that you have coming in the future that would help residential with battery backup, backups, because we put a lot of, a lot of solar back into the, online, but after it gets dark, it's horrendous.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's my question.
No, I totally get that, a few years ago, we piloted a program, but residential batteries are changing so quickly, we're just not ready to have those type of programs, and with the safety mechanisms, that's just something we're always considering, especially when we work with our local fire districts. especially when we work with our local fire districts and making sure that they're prepared to respond when our systems are, have an event. Well, thank you all, I appreciate all the questions.
Sorry, I like to move around, I have a lot of energy, so just bear with me. Uh, so we're going to introduce Tiffany and Mindy. So they're from our code enforcement and I always like to take the opportunity whenever we have staff at these community meetings to, they're really the unsung heroes of our city. They, they work constantly, there's not a time where I send an email and it's a Saturday at, you know, six o'clock at night and I get a response. Not saying that you guys should do that, but what I'm saying is, uh, they're, they're constantly thinking of how they can conserve our, our city. And, and the, the progress that we've made, um, has largely been due to the fact that we have a lot of, uh, folks in, in city hall and throughout our various city buildings with servants hearts. And, um, code enforcement is a prime example of that. And, uh, early into my term, because I just hit a year, uh, we started having, I'm sure you guys saw the illegal sober living that we had going on in our city. Jessica, Mindy, the rest of their team really spearheaded our efforts to combat this illegal sober living problem that not only our city, but all these jurisdictions are having. They did such a good job that actually a lot of other jurisdictions are modeling their response based on them. And so I can't give them enough credit for the work that they do. They've been highlighted on, uh, different, uh, you know, conferences, the news, and so we're lucky to have them in there. And so one of the things that they're going to talk about today is one of the things that we've identified, uh, was a loophole in our current code that these illegal sober living home operators, uh, were, were exploiting. And so they're going to talk a little bit more about that and then answer any questions. Uh, whoever is the most engaged, I'm told that they have a prize, it's a blank citation, you can give a neighbor you don't like, um, but you have to be engaged. So, uh, with that, please give a random pause for Mindy.
Good morning, happy new year. So you may recognize Tiffany and I, we were at a couple of months ago at an association meeting and we talked to you about this, um, short-term rental, uh, ordinance that was enacted by the city. Um, if you guys are interested in more information on the table, we have the brochures, um, over there available for your use. So in April, uh, City of Surprise passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals here in the City of Surprise. And as, uh, the councilman stated, it was a indirect relation to the illegal activity that we have been seeing throughout, um, throughout the entire valley actually on illegal sober living homes. And so we had heard that, um, you know, it was possible for them to open up in some of these short-term rentals. And so the city enacted the rental ordinance, um, short-term vacation rental ordinance, which allows us to prohibit those sober living homes to be operated in short-term rentals. So that was the foundation, the primary reason why the, um, new code went into effect. So that occurred in April. Um, we went back to city council in June, um, to get approval to charge the fee for the short-term rental license. A short-term rental is, uh, defined by the state of Arizona as, um, transient lodging obtained for 30 consecutive days or less. So again, we followed state statute, um, in regards to the timeframe for a short-term rental. When the ordinance was first enacted, we, um, had a period of education throughout the community. So we came out, we spoke at, uh, your association meeting and at multiple others throughout the community, we stood up a website. So we really wanted to give owners of short-term rental, short-term rentals, an opportunity to voluntarily register through, um, the City of Surprise and get their license. We've transitioned into our education or our enforcement phase. So obviously we are still continuing to educate as we encounter, but we are proceeding with enforcement for unregistered short-term rentals here in the city. To speak a little bit about the application process, um, there is an, um, owner information that we have to have. Each short-term rental is required to have a 24-hour emergency contact, um, registered with the city. And when we get the application, we do call the emergency contact to verify that they understand that it is a 24-hour availability. And so, um, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that the person identified on the application understands the expectations about, um, responding to, um, public safety if there's an issue in the middle of the night or from, you know, any other entity there. We require that they have their TPT license. All short-term rental owners are required to have, uh, general liability insurance and we're, uh, requiring proof of that as part of the application process. We have a signed owner statement so that we're sure that, um, the owner is aware of what is occurring on the property, that the intended use is to be operated as a short-term rental. Um, and all, all rentals in Maricopa County are required to be registered, um, as a rental property with Maricopa County. So we're verifying that that has occurred. That's a very nominal, I believe it's like a $15 fee to get registered through Maricopa County, but all rentals, whether they're short-term or long-term, I believe are required to be registered through the county. And then the, the neighborhood notification piece is really important because part of that is providing the emergency contact information to the surrounding neighbors as well. So we want the community, the adjacent neighbors to know what is happening at that property. Because often code enforcement will get calls about, you know, there's a lot of, there's different traffic all the time, there's parties in the backyard, there's, you know, we don't know what's happening at the property. So by requiring the licenses, um, and the neighborhood notification, at least you guys will be aware if, if one does go in adjacent to you guys. I'm sure that your HOA has, has, excuse me, has specific rules. And so you, in addition to the city requirements, you'll also want to make sure that your, um, HOA, um, guidelines are followed in regards to rentals. Some things that are prohibited in a short-term rental, um, sorry, I'm getting feedback. Uh, special events that would normally require, um, another permit or a license are not, are not allowed to operate out of a short-term rental. You can't have retail, um, rentals, uh, restaurant space, banquet space out of a short-term rental. Any type of use that violates any other local code would be prohibited. You cannot have a short-term rental housing sex offenders. Um, you cannot operate a sober living home, as I stated previously, you can't sell liquor, drugs, or pornography, and of course prostitution. And adult-oriented businesses are prohibited in your short-term rentals. There are penalties for non-compliance. So if you have a property or you know of a property in the City of Surprise that is not registered, um, our code enforcement number is on here. So if you, if you yourself are operating a short-term rental and you have any questions, you know, please feel free to reach out to myself or my team. Um, and if you have any, um, questions about an existing operating one, we can also look into that and investigate and make sure that they're complying with all city codes.
So one of the number one questions that we hear in the community is, is defining if someone's residing on a lot that they own, for example, you own two lots here in the resort and you want your family to stay on the other lot, that wouldn't be defined as a short-term rental because there's not dollars exchanging hands there? Or, or how is that defined from the city's perspective?
So less than, um, 30 consecutive days?
Correct. Stay, for example, they're only staying for two weeks. Your family's coming just to stay for two weeks, um, you have two properties and they're going to reside on the neighboring property. But at that point in time, you guys wouldn't fall into that category as requiring a permit for a short-term, short-term rental because it's family?
Right.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Kopp. I was trying not to talk today because I sound like this. I'm the Assistant Director in Community Development and have the pleasure of working with Mindy and code enforcement directly. The family relationship isn't the issue, it's are you using the home for profit and to continuously rent out on a short-term basis? So if you own two properties outright and your family wants to come stay with you, it's no different than them coming to visit you anywhere else, right? But if that house is also listed on Airbnb and your family visits for two weeks and someone else's family visits for two weeks and someone else's family visits for two weeks after that, that's when we, we start to care and take note.
Perfect, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, that's, that's what we were leading from and the direction of the association, but we just wanted to be sure.
And I'm going to let Mindy take all the other questions, but I did want to very quickly, there was a gentleman over here that asked about being taken advantage of on these solar companies. Code enforcement is charged with, um, helping to enforce all of the city's codes. We do have a no solicitation ordinance. So if you have no soliciting, no soliciting posted on your property and people are contacting you, let us know, uh, because we want to go to those businesses and tell them they need to knock it off. The other thing that you can do as a resident is you can go to the Arizona Register of Contractors, that's AZROC.gov, and you can look up any business that's licensed with the Register of Contractors to see if they're a legitimate business or not before you choose to move forward and engage. And I would strongly, strongly recommend that. The other side of the house that I oversee is building safety and we have a lot of people, unfortunately, that get taken advantage of by contractors of all types. So I would strongly encourage before you do business with anybody, engage the Arizona Register of Contractors and make sure they're a legitimate licensed bonded insured company. Thank you.
Good morning, Roberta Ernest, lot 712, Board of Directors. Is there any way that our association, our management company can get a complete list of the units in Happy Trails that are registered with your, with your city?
Yeah, I believe that that could be, um, obtained through filing a public records request. So, um, that if you go onto the surprise.gov website, the city clerk department has a records request form.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have, oh, wonderful.
Bee Cheek, lot 219. You said that the neighborhood would be notified. I'm assuming that outside of our resort, the neighborhood would be everybody on the block, but here in Happy Trails, our lots are so small that that could almost mean people behind us in several blocks. So how would you define it for us?
So the definition is actually in the ordinance and it speaks to immediately adjacent neighbors. So it's diagonal and across the street, it's not the entire community. So, so it's, it's the immediate neighbor notification.
So it's just the people to my right and left and behind me and across the street?
Across the street, diagonal.
Well, since our lots are so small, that's problematic for us.
Thank you.
You can probably tell I don't always need a microphone. My parents were in the theater. They taught me how to talk loud. Then I was a T-ball coach for nine years. So Coach Ali, Coach Ali, Coach Ali, Coach Ali, Coach Ali. Okay, so most of the time people can hear me without a microphone, but I want to make sure those of you there all the way in the back, you can hear us, okay? Okay, good. All the way back there, all right, excellent. All right, so I'm giving you the first thing about all the free stuff you can get over here so that if you decide that you're tired of listening and we're still talking, feel free to go to the table. We have, uh, both Nick's newsletter copy and my newsletter. We have different districts, most of the time we have the same stuff, but every once in a while we toss in something that would be specific to us. So give you a heads up on that. There's also a sign-up form where you can sign up to get one. Our, both of our newsletters, they only come out once a month. Um, we actually don't write them, we just edit them to make sure that they say what we want them to say. He writes his, "Don't believe it, it's not true." Um, there's a flyer there regarding Prop 479. This will be an item on the ballot, so perhaps we can be asked back later to talk about Prop 479. It's, Prop 400 is expiring, it's half cent sales tax issue, you may be interested in this and whether you want to vote for it, but there is a flyer over there that you can pick up. Did you want to say so?
Does everybody know what that, that is, Prop 400? Okay, so I have the pleasure of representing one of the largest geographic districts. And so with that, a lot of the different communities that I get the opportunity to represent have their own fair set of challenges. Up north, I'm sure you've seen it or have you've heard of it, we have this issue with the 303 and Grand, have you guys, okay, so, um, primarily if you read my newsletter, half, half of that consists of providing those folks updates, which is good to get around to the different areas of my district just because not all the same challenges are there. So Prop 400 extension or now Prop 479, like Ally said, is the extension of that sales tax increase, but not increase, it's just an extension. Um, and what that does is provide for, uh, major investments for transportation. One of the major things that applies to our folks here in Surprise are several projects listed, but one of the main ones is a, a complete interchange on the 303 and Grand Avenue, a flyover. And so if you've traveled over there, or a lot of times when the traffic backs up, it impacts, I mean, it's gone all the way from the 303 to the Bell exit there. So, and if you've ever sat in that, it's extremely scary being at a standstill while people are zooming by. So, um, and, and I'll make sure to include that next time we meet of all the projects listed that would impact Surprise, uh, but it's going to go to the voters. And so we'll be out here, we'll try to get maybe someone from MAG, um, which is the Maricopa Association of Governments to come out here and kind of answer any additional questions. But, uh, for the folks that I represent up north, it's a major investment in a lot of that infrastructure that we desperately need because we're growing at a rapid rate over there. Yes, ma'am? Oh, I have the mic, I'm like, yeah, go ahead, talk.
Is that something different than the one that we proposed that we just passed this year in a special election?
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, you, uh, we passed the bond, um, and so a lot of those projects included, uh, roadways that the city controls. So you have, um, the expansion of 163rd Avenue, you have a Happy Valley expansion, you have a police substation, you have some funding for public safety. Like I said, a lot of those projects were in District 1. Thankfully, my colleagues were gracious enough to let me be the needy child on the council and get those projects through. Uh, but some of my colleagues, some of the questions that they received from other folks in their districts is, well, why am I having a bond that has a police substation up north that doesn't impact me? Well, I can tell you as a firefighter, well, what we operate with in this, in the state of Arizona, specifically in the valley, is called the automatic aid system, which means if you call 911, you're going to get the closest, most appropriate unit responding to your emergency. Unfortunately, we can't predict when emergencies happen. And so the station that might be first due here might be out on a call, so you're going to get the closest. And so the more we can be proactive and making sure that we're, uh, positioning our stations, we're providing them with the equipment, the training, and then the personnel that they need to keep those response times down, that's what we need to do and that bond helps address that. So it is two separate things. The bond, like I said, is more of the city-controlled items. The, the Prop 479 extension would be the investments that cover all of Maricopa County, but there's specifically projects listed in there that would impact us and our, our residents.
So one of them's the half-cent sales tax that's been in place for 40 years. So you probably don't even know you're paying it at this point, but, um, when I was a kid, my mom would say, "Oh, you want that? Well, then you need to put your money in it too." I don't know if you ever did that to your kids, but if you did, good job. Part of that is if we, the county, so this is not just the city, but if we, the county, don't put our money in, the state of Arizona doesn't put their money in, and if the state doesn't put their money in, the feds don't put their money in. So big projects like the 303 don't get done just with local money. You guys don't want your taxes to go up enough to pay for that, I'm guessing. Anybody want to pay for that? No, okay. So having said that, so this is a way that we get everybody's money from the county a half a cent at a time. And so there is a flyer on it, but I really would like it if we could come back closer to the time, you'll get to vote on it in November. So, and everybody gets to vote on it as long as you are a registered voter in Maricopa County. So if you're registered to vote in Wyoming because you go away somewhere else, then it's, you don't get to vote. If you're from Canada, you don't get to vote. So those neighbors of ours don't get to vote. But it will be, everybody in Maricopa gets to vote on this. So it's kind of important and we'd love to have more questions and be able to give you more time on that. So there's a flyer on that. There are business cards for both of us, so you can find us. There are community guides, um, that have a lot of the resources that are available here. There are pens and giveaway chachki things over here. Uh, one of the favorite ones is the vial of life, which is the thing you put your, um, medications in and put it in your refrigerator so that if, um, you're in need, a firefighter can come in and, uh, in and know what you need to be taken care of.
Those are really helpful, so if you could please do that, that helps us a lot.
And all this stuff's free.
Oh, we have a question.
One addition to that is I have a vial of life in my car.
Okay.
Two.
Oh, you have two?
No, also.
Oh, okay.
In addition to?
In addition to. It's like, who's on what? Who's on first?
And one of the things that we're going to talk about down the road that I hope we're invited back is there's a way that if you have animals in your home, where you can let the firefighters know that you have animals in your home and how we can take care of it. So we got all kinds of other cool stuff, we just only have so many minutes to talk to.
Who has cats?
Or dogs.
Okay. The dogs usually are more friendly to us. I've gotten bit by a cat before, and it's not fun, so we'll do our best, but the cats kind of seem to live in their own world.
I'll go and you stay. I have to get my steps into.
Okay. I'm Nora Cox, Lot 746, and I really have had this question in my mind for a long time. Why has our district changed from 1 to 2? Did it have anything to do with income? It seems like, you know, the other districts are a little bit more...
So...
Shirley.
I like to think that you guys just really wanted me and Ally to overlap. We didn't add any districts. It goes by the census data, and so when we were presenting with, we had a couple options for the maps, and the map that was chosen was the one that displaced the least amount of residents, meaning most residents were able to keep the representative that they voted for. And so the next time we do it, I expect some significant changes. Like I said, District 1 is rapidly growing. There's tons of lots that haven't even been built yet that were approved way back when I was probably in high school that are waiting to be built, and so we're going to see that population change. We're already growing at a substantial rate, and so you're going to see that change a little bit. And then what we're tasked with is how can we make sure that each district is represented as best as possible, and so...
So your district was District 1 before, and it's still District 1 now. No, you're still 1. That was a possibility. See, I run District 2, he runs District 1, but I have Grand and Traditions around you, so we thought it would be cool if we both showed up at the same time, because one of the things that we're really good at at City Council is helping each other out. And I had come out here to talk to a number of folks when the former City Council member was not well. And so I came out, so I've been from District 2 for the last three years, but Nick's only been the District 1 person for the last year. So we're just kind of team tagging you, but you're still District 1, so nothing changed from that standpoint. It's just the people who do the work that's changed. So the census comes out every 10 years, and they add up all the buildings that people live in. So like in Nick's district, where they have a bunch of things that are being built that weren't here in 2020, they don't get counted if they weren't built and people living in them in 2020 when the census was done. And so the next census won't be done until 2030. So I think it's going, yeah, only every 10 years. I know it's crazy. So as more people move in up north, this area could change to another district, 2 or 3 or whatever, but it's based on a total population. We try to make it even. So each one of us, so there's six districts plus the mayor. So we just try to make sure that you have enough representation based on the population at a point in time. So all the people that have moved in here, many of you may have moved in 10 years ago, 15 years ago. I've been here 20 years, so it's, well, not here. I mean, I've been in Surprise for 20 years, I should restate that, but just the idea that that's how it gets set. So, and then, and then we pick up a map that says, "This property, this property, and this property belong to this district." So right now, this property and all of the residents who live here are in District 1 still. So nothing changed from that standpoint. Does that help you a little bit? Maybe? Oh, it's his turn to walk. Okay. Do you have a question, too?
Yeah, because my...
Your neighbors told you?
No.
Yeah, okay.
The newspapers, whatever, and said that we were in District 2.
It was a possibility that you could have ended up in District 2. Then you'd be stuck with me. So, but that's not the map that...
But it seemed like the district just kind of went around us, and we were just...
It does. District 2 goes around you. District 1, which is Nick's district, includes Surprise Farms 2, 3, and 5, which is south of you, and the folks that live out on the farm type land.
Way out.
Way out, and then, yeah. And then all the stuff out to Whitman includes all of that.
Sounds, still sounds to me like income.
Well, no, it's not. It actually had nothing to do with income, but anyway, but they picked the, I know.
Dora, I like to think you and I are going to become friends.
Okay, so there's one more handout, and then we're going to ask just general questions, and it's my favorite handout. This is the restaurant guide for the city of Surprise. For those of you who aren't here year round, you may not have noticed that we've put in a few more restaurants. When I came here in 2002, there were 25,000 peeping, people living in the city of Surprise, and there were no restaurants, other than the Blimpies inside Sun City West at the gas station. Since then, we have 147,000 more people, and we have a few more restaurants. We now have 234 open restaurants. Exactly. And there's a list over there. There is actually an online site, but I always print out the list in case you want to check off where you've been and if you like it. 59 of those are what we call mom and pop restaurants, so people usually say to me, "I want more mom and pop restaurants." And I say, "Have you been to all 59 of these guys?" Because if not, don't call me, because they need your business. But we're always getting new ones as new opportunities, new builds are happening, so there will be some more new restaurants. I know Chef Peter just moved over to you guys from Sun Village, so that's yay for you, so for your cafe. But there are other places in case you want to go someplace else, including Cooper's Hawk, if you are, particularly if you're a wine drinker or you want some really high-end food, and it's actually very good. I will recommend anyone who goes to Cooper's Hawk, take a sweater. Their AC is on, and it's a wine place, so they keep it, I always have to take a sweater. So just if you get cold easily, take a sweater because they keep their AC pretty hot. Firebird's just opened like a week ago, so that's another nice restaurant. Again, it's in the Prisata area. We'll have seven more restaurants right in front of City Hall coming soon, probably in the next year. Right in front of City Hall, seven more restaurants that I know of, plus a couple here and there and here and there. And with luck, the people in Sun City Grand will get their restaurant open in the next two weeks. So they're down to those silly people from the city of Surprise who have to make sure the electricity comes on, because that was the delay for a while we didn't have. So they won't let the restaurant open if it doesn't have electricity. I don't know what the deal is with that, but that's those picky people at the city. So, and that's called Maple and Rye, and it's being run by the guy who runs Haymakers in Peoria. So if you've been to Haymakers in either Scottsdale or Peoria or North Phoenix, you will know that that's what the kind of restaurant it is. So it's a, it should be a very nice restaurant, should open in the next two weeks. We're right at the key handing over spot. So that'll be, that's not too far from you guys either, so that's right around the neighborhood. So please take that. So that's my... Oh, wait, there's one.
Something with that, too, if I may. They do, our economic development team does the retail survey. Please fill that out. They're really aggressive on who they try to attract into our city. They want to make sure we're bringing in businesses that, one, will provide good jobs for folks, but also businesses that our residents will enjoy. And so the more feedback you can provide them, it really helps guide their actions on what businesses that we try to bring into the city. Ultimately, it is up to the developer, or landowner, on what businesses come in. However, you've seen it with what they're doing with, what they did in the past with Costco, you're seeing it with IKEA, you're seeing a lot of these good restaurants coming in, and that's largely because of the feedback they've received from our residents, and they've gone out and was aggressive in trying to attract them into our city.
And the last form that's over there is our ride share pamphlets. Now, we did have a little bit of an issue here because people that come here don't realize you have one address and lots, but we got that fixed. Ride share's a program that is 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. For $3, you can go eight miles. They come to your residence and pick you up and take you wherever you want to go. So if you're 55 or older or a veteran, you're qualified for this program. So if you wanted to go somewhere outside of your community and you didn't want to worry about driving at night, or you wanted to go to the Vista Theater and you didn't want to drive, or you wanted to have a beverage that might have some alcohol in it, and you didn't want to worry about driving after you had your drinks, this is a great program. There's information about it. I'm just going to briefly go over it, but it is available for all of you. There's a phone number. You have to prove you live in Surprise, and then they'll come and get you from your home and bring you back to your home, and it is a 24-hour service, $3 each way, eight miles. That's helpful. It's a great program. We don't have buses. This is better. You'd never get a bus in here to get to you guys at your home. I'm just saying, that's never going to happen, but they'll come to your home. So we do have that all set up for you, so if you're interested in that. So those are my handouts, so please help yourself to the tchotchkes and the pens and anything else, and if you'd like to sign up for our newsletters, please do that. So next, we'll do questions, and then I have one last announcement. So questions from the group out here. You got stuff you want to know about? My turn.
We have a singles club here, and one of the guys gave up his car to drive, but he told us all about it, but there was a financial attached to it. Yes, and because, so that disqualified some of us.
So you make too much money. You and I are going to be good friends now, okay? Because he's being friends with her over here, right? All right. So the deal is, there is not a qualifier for income. Anybody who is over the age of 55 or a veteran, so if you have a 50-year-old veteran or a 40-year-old veteran, you qualify. There's no income qualification. So he kind of got a little bit wrong. Okay? You're welcome. Questions this way. Eight miles from where you are. You can go further than that, and it's $2 a mile after that, so if you kind of think like taxi service, so it's not bad. I will tell you, Peoria is not a player at the moment, so you can get to Peoria, but you can't get back. So if you go to Arizona Broadway Theater, you might have to Uber back, but it's not... And the other thing I hear a lot about is it's only for doctors and dental appointments and medical, no. You can go to the grocery store, you can go meet a friend, you can go out for food. It's not restricted on where you're going. You just have to fill out the form. Takes it somewhere in the general vicinity of a couple weeks to get it processed, but if you get stuck for any reason, or you have someone who is going to have medical surgery who can't drive, and so you need it in a hurry, if you let one of us know, then we can work with the people who fill out the paperwork to make sure we get it in as fast as we can. Sometimes you have eye surgery, you have a knee surgery, the person who drives is your person who normally would take you somewhere. Just saying. I have a lot of people who, they tease me that they can tell when I speak, because then they get a stack of applications. So it's okay. $3, eight miles each way. You can go further, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Costs you nothing to sign up. So if you have a car, and you drive to the supermarket, and you're already signed up, and for some reason your car breaks down, you can call them, they'll come pick you up and bring you home, so then the next day you can arrange for your kids or your neighbors or your friends to take care of it. So if you never use it, it costs you nothing. Costs you nothing to sign up, but it's a grace, purposeful thing for you guys to have just in case of emergency. Yes, ma'am, all the way in the back. My turn to go.
I'm timing you.
I'm sure it's in your literature, but you can call within like an hour. Do you need two-hour notice? Do you need a day notice?
You can call whenever you need to. You can set up something for the future, but it's not a requirement that you have an advance appointment. So if you, think of it like local taxi service. That's really what it's like. We work with Valley Metro. All of the drivers are tested for drugs. They're all insured, so it's not just some random guy off the street coming to get you. As a kid, my mom said, "Don't get into cars with strangers." Now we tell our kids, "Oh, yeah, call somebody, they'll come get you," which is just kind of weird for me, but, but these guys work for Valley Metro. They're all vetted, they're all insured, they all have drug testing. It's all good. So you can trust the people that come to get you, and we have the guard shack knows what we're doing with this. So once you're set up, there's like a little pin that goes into the map that says, "This is Ally's house." Well, it says, "It's your house, not my house," but, so that when you call in, they know exactly which space they should go to. Okay? And they're supposed to know not to go to your back gate. Every once in a while, there's a sign there now, and we've told them they're supposed to come to the front gate. But just so that you know, every once in a while, somebody messes up and says, "I'm at the gate and I can't get in." Well, dude, you're at the wrong place. Anyway, but mostly, so there's no financial requirement, and it costs nothing to sign up. So think of it as an emergency taxi service, 7 days a week, 24 hours a day. So it's a great program. Pick up the brochure, then if you have questions, we can always come back, and we can have somebody as a speaker besides us if you want us to come back. You're not required to tip them, but you may if you wish.
You might get picked up faster next time if you tip.
If it's the same person. Yeah, but you may, because the price includes, it's actually subsidized by the city, so that's why it's only $3. We pay a part of the money to them. So I want to make sure that if you know that there's a service and you just never used it because you didn't know we had it, that that's not the case anymore. Okay? Any other questions about our handy outie thingies? Oh, your turn, you have to go. Okay, now I'm timed.
I got it.
I had to sign up a couple years ago on your disability with my husband to go to these, and this uses metro program. So I have a specific number.
Right.
Do I use that number, or do I change now?
You don't have to change anything. If you're set up for a disability ride, if somebody has a wheelchair or special needs that they need, it's the same phone number. So if you're already signed up, but you can always, if for some reason, they do have three plans. Okay, so we have the everyday plan. We also have a 400-mile-a-month plan, so if you're going to Mayo for treatment, you can change to that. There's also a plan that requires special paramedical stuff. So if you're happy with what's going on, you're great, you don't need to change to anything, but you can call them to see if what you're doing, your needs, just like what Jessica was talking about, we have these three plans. So if you call them up and go, "Hi, this has changed in my life," they can always switch you from one plan to another. Yeah, the paratransit will take you further. So if you're signed up for paratransit, that's within the same company. Okay?
We do have a couple chat questions online here. The first question is, I'm curious to know if the city's Surprise police and fire departments are prepared for the growth and influx of people coming into Surprise?
Take a swing at that one. Oh, no, that's a good question, and it's one that I kind of addressed earlier when we were talking about the bond. I can tell you, valley-wide, we're experiencing a lot of growth, but specifically in Surprise, like I said before, we are growing at a large rate, and I always say the time to talk about response times isn't when they're bad, it's when we're doing okay. And so I can tell you that both our chiefs that are leading our fire department and our police department have a vision for where we need to go in the future, how are we going to place our stations in a way that'll decrease response times, how are we currently staffing our apparatus? And so with that bond, like I said, with the police substation going up north, that'll help, the additional fire station will help. And so we, as the growth is going, we are being proactive rather than reactive, and you saw that with our priorities in the bond. Most recently, and a little bit north of us here, we put in Rescue 304, which is out of Station 304, just 163rd and Pat Tillman, or just north of 163rd and Grand intersection there. That's an additional public safety apparatus that is providing additional service, not only for residents up there, but also, they, like I said, you're going to get the closest, most appropriate unit responding. And so we do have a plan, they're actively talking. We know that the growth, the growth is coming, and so we are taking steps to try to make sure that we're prepared for that growth. Another thing that we're looking at, and so I work for the city of Glendale, and I can tell you, we've seen even our response times go up, and we're finding the need to put more units into service. It's just, that's just the nature of the game that we're dealing with in the valley. And then one of the other challenges that we're tasked with finding is, we have men and women who are eager to serve, but how can we get them trained, right? They have to go through, if they're fire, they have to go through at least a 14-week academy. If you want a paramedic, that takes about 10 months. And so all of these things take time. And so that's why our, both of our chiefs work hand-in-hand with our city manager, our assistant city manager, who actually has a public safety background, and then also Andrea, who is our CFO, to see how we can be good stewards of the taxpayer money each fiscal year, but also making sure that we're being proactive. And so we're not rushing around to hire 14 men and women to staff our departments in a given year. We're making sure that we're being responsible with the budget and planning accordingly. So that's just kind of a surface, I feel like I want to talk to them. That's just a surface-level answer. I'd be more than happy to invite both of our chiefs to an upcoming meeting, because I don't want to speak too much for them, but those conversations are being had. You know, I grew up here. I have family here. And so when I hear instances of, you know, when you call 911, I don't know if anyone's had to call 911. Has anyone called 911? Okay. Unfortunately, the last time I had to do it is a TV fell down on my little sister. Thankfully, we had this old entertainment center that caught the cord, and so she was okay. But I can tell you, being on that end, the seconds felt like minutes, the minutes feel like hours. I can tell you, responding to those emergencies, we can't get there quick enough. And so no one wants to be in a position where if you call 911, you feel like you're waiting for a long time. And so I feel like it's our responsibility as your representatives to making sure that we're having those conversations and making sure we are being proactive. And so the best that I can tell you at this point is those conversations are being had. We're very well aware of the growth, and we're going to make sure that we're staffing our public safety personnel accordingly.
So to the gentleman who asked the question about what is our number-one goal? She asked about APS as number one. Our number-one is safety and security within the city. So our public safety, fire, and police is our number-one priority citywide. So the quick answer is yes, and the slow answer is what he said. Do you have another question?
I do have, so two more questions real quick. I think this one kind of leads into what you stated with possibly bringing the chiefs out to talk with us. But in the community, we have some concerns with our, we've talked about safety and traffic control. We're private streets, and the question here on the table is, can there be any assistance from an entity, Surprise PD, to assist us with traffic control within the resort? That wouldn't just be a presence, it would be the ability to give citations on any kind of traffic control violations, since we are privately owned, private streets.
So the short answer is no. But if you have an issue or a special event or something, sometimes one of the things we can do is work with the city for our community on patrol volunteer program. We do have that, which could be something that would be implemented here. You could have your own volunteers do it. But we also have our community officers who can help with traffic control for a specific event. But they're not allowed to give tickets because we don't own the streets. You decided you wanted a gate. Huh? Will you give them to us? Okay, as long as you want to understand that you have to take down your security guards, and take down your borders, and move the gates, and...
Just minor changes.
Yeah, just a few things. But the answer is, Traditions has the same issue. So it's one of those pluses and minuses, but there are options for something. And you said you had one more?
The last question I have here is for the rental side of things. Does any of the short-term rental rules apply to RV lots, whether there is not living space rented, i.e. the renters are living in their own RV?
I think we sort of answered that, but Tiffany's walking over here, so we'll make her work her voice again.
So are they renting a room in the RV? If they're living in the RV and they own the RV and the lot, we don't have any issues. But if they're renting a room, so it would be similar to a house, you know, a stationary home that's there permanently. If you're renting a room on a short-term basis, then you need to register as a short-term rental. So possibly?
Perfect. Oh, I got you. I'm coming.
Oh, good. It's his turn.
What is the city's current position on mass transportation? I think if we had some good mass transportation here, we would be able to navigate the streets much better.
Okay, I'll take this one, because I'm on the Valley Metro board. All right. First of all, it depends on what you mean by mass transit. A bus route to run one street in the city of Surprise is $2 million. And what's happening since, yeah, let's just, we'll raise your taxes, and then we can pay for that. So what the city's view is, we would rather do programs like Ride Choice, which is more like taxi service, and we have a secondary service running in the city. It's not out this far yet, but it is in sort of the center of the city called We Ride, which is $2. And it goes, the number of people who are eligible to use this go all the way down to like 13. So teenagers can use it to get from somewhere to somewhere. So rather than having buses, anybody in the room would like to drive behind a bus on Bell Road? Please raise your hand, because my answer is, don't do that. So cost, it will not help traffic. And actually, ridership in the Phoenix metro area in buses is reducing, because since COVID, people don't want to get in a bus where they don't know when it was cleaned or who the other people are in the bus with them. So what we're looking at is using our other mini-transport services like Ride Choice and We Ride, which are two programs we do. The Ride Choice is specifically for 55-plus, and paratransit. But we do have other program, that other program, they might end up smerging together at some point, where both programs would be available. But Ride Choice, We Ride is only available from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. So if you're wanting to go from the Old Town Center to the library, you want to go from one of the high schools over to Prisata, that's all available during the daytime, but it doesn't do the overnight stuff. So we're looking at public transportation, not at buses, but at other forms to provide those same services. And realistically, our streets are not laid out for a bus service. If you've ever had to drive in Sun City, where everything goes around in a circle, it's like not good for buses. And we can't get the buses inside the communities. So communities like Traditions and here and Grand that are not on the streets, then people would have to walk a half a mile to get to a bus stop. Or if you're going to drive, then you have to park your car there. So we're really not laid out for old-fashioned public transportation. And we're not really set up to dig up the streets and put in Subways or Ls. I'm not saying that couldn't happen, but the metro that runs down to Phoenix, we'd like to have a way to get from here to there, which would be great, so then you could take the metro down to Phoenix. But, wait, I'm going to cover his ears. He works for Glendale. The Glendale people don't want the metro to go past Glendale.
For the record, I just answer 911 calls in Glendale. I don't have anything to do, so...
So the issue is, depending on who owns the dirt. They don't want, so right now, we don't have metro service from here to there. We do have two buses that are there for people who commute to downtown Phoenix, but we only have those two right now, and they're not full. Most of the people who ride those buses go into downtown Phoenix, and they're commuters down there. They live out here somewhere, and there's a rideshare park there. But the buses aren't full every day, and we have less than 40% of the people use, the buses are used less than 40% of the time across the valley. So the answer is, right now, not so much. But we are looking at other ways to do other things to get people from here to there. And the new streets we're putting in with the bond will help with traffic on Bell. That's one issue. And if we get more stuff happening up at 303 and Grand with 579, that could be a good thing, too. But, right, Bell's as big as it's going to be right now, so all we can do is work on east-west from other parts of the city to get east-west people going on a road besides Bell. That's really our focus from the traffic standpoint. I hope that answers that question. Any other questions? One more. Okay, your turn.
It seems to me, I've lived in several communities smaller than this one. It's on? Okay. I've lived in big towns and small towns, and it seems to me, a town of over, what did you say, over 100,000? Yeah, 150,000 should have some kind of bus. I mean, you're talking about, well, they couldn't come in here. Well, if they had a bus stop right outside the gate, that wouldn't be a problem. But you got your scooters, and I'm sure that there's areas there they could turn into a parking spot for that, would not be a big deal. But you're saying we don't care about air pollution, because it's going to cost us too much, right? You said 40, only 40% people ride the buses. Now, if every one of those had a car, how much, you know, how much traffic does that create? Over 40% were riding in the bus.
Let me try to answer this, and then we'll have one last announcement. And then we'll let you guys all go, because I'm sure you have someplace to go, like food, lunch, meetings. Okay, I'll talk really fast. So it's not that we don't care about air pollution, but people aren't using buses the same way they used to use them. Even schools... Wait. Well, no. We could use, so let me ask everybody in the room, just as a survey. Would you want a bus yourself that would park here at the restaurant, and you would bring all your cars over there, so there would be no parking at the restaurant, to go where? Okay, I'm just saying. And so... On Bell? Yeah. Right. Okay. Okay, so we don't have a place set at the moment. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just telling you facts. No, I'm not arguing. I understand what you're trying to say. You're trying to say if more people took the buses, because the buses ran. Okay, so there's two issues. People driving them, correct? Okay, well, we do have an entire hazardous waste process that you may or may not know about. And we actually have a free program to pick up hazardous waste and how you can get rid of it. So let me back up on that. However, we have younger people than you and me who do not want to be in a bus. And we have older people who do not want to be in a bus, that they don't know who's with them. So we have safety issues. I'm just saying. So it's not that we don't care about air pollution, but the other issue is, we don't have, the city hasn't been set up with a place for all these people to park and take the bus. And even the places where they have buses, like downtown Phoenix. So we're changing the buses that do exist to the natural gas buses, so that there's less pollution. We are expanding the metro system in downtown Phoenix, if that's where you're going. But right now, what we're doing is this other kind of taxi service, which has air pollution-friendly service. So that's our way of dealing with it right now. So it's not that we don't care, it's just that there's only so many things we can do. So it's not that it's too expensive to do it, but if nobody rides the bus, even if it went somewhere, and here's a fun fact. If you go from here, across Bell Road, and you get to Sun City West, where it's Maricopa County, the county has said they have no money for a bus service to go through their property. So you...
So, hold on, real quick, because I know we're hitting 12 o'clock. We can go back and forth, but I have to plug my newsletter, because it's important to me. If you guys haven't already, please subscribe to my newsletter. My business card's over there. If there's something you want to see in the newsletter, I do, I do take a lot of time on the newsletter, because I want to make sure it's worth the read for you folks. So if there's something specific, a subject or something that you feel like it hasn't been covered, let me know. Shoot me an email. I'll make sure it makes it. As you can see, when I started off my newsletter, when I first got into now, it's changed a lot, and that's largely been because of residents' feedback and what they wanted to see. So like I said, I want to make it worth your while, so please let me know what you want to see in there. If there's some information you're missing, I'll make sure to include it in there. If you have Facebook, Instagram, I'm also on social media. I post updates, probably Facebook's the most active, just to let you know what's going on and any specific alerts that are going on as well. So I try to use every avenue of communication that I can to connect with you. My goal is to be as accessible as possible, is also be as transparent as possible. So if you have a question, or you just want to know what's going on, please subscribe to those newsletters, get those District 1 text alerts, because there's a lot of good information in there. I just had to plug that, because I know we're getting a little lunchtime. I'm a fireman, and so once the lunchtime hits, usually my brain shuts off anyway, so I can relate.
My last announcement is I'm running for mayor. So if you have not had a chance to sign my petition, Kevin Perry over here has my petition. I will be running in the August primary. But I need 1,000 signatures to get on the ballot. I'm close, but you could all help with a couple more signatures, so please stop by and do that. But I'm here for the rest of this year, no matter what happens. So we're both here to help you, and we really appreciate your time, so thank you very much. Sounds ridiculous.
Again, thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate you guys so much, and we will be in touch. Take care, guys.